Should be good.
All right, we welcome everybody here to our school board meeting. We'll start out with the pledge allegiance and followed by the prayer. So please, please stand and do a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day which we've been given. We're grateful for the beautiful weather and sunshine that we have enjoyed. We're grateful for the opportunity which we all have to be here to discuss the things that are on the agenda. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to be able to serve in this community and in this school district. We're grateful for the administration and our staff and our teachers. We ask to bless them and to always strengthen them with the ability to have the knowledge of how to, to help the students here in this district. We ask to please always bless, bless them with good health and protection. Bless this country, bless this, this community, and bless this each and every day that we may recognize the, the great blessings that we have and the freedoms that we enjoy. We say these things, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Future board meetings, March 26th, April 23rd, and May 28th, all here at the administration building. Here at six o'clock. We have a few revisions to the agenda, just under donations and HR. We'll go to public recognition.
All right, just to have a few tonight, as you remember, our staff and teacher spotlights have been concluded because of the teacher and staff, because we've gone through all six schools. So we kind of miss out having those people recognized now or recognized throughout the years. So I have a couple of things, actually three. First of all, from Northfield, congratulations to Northfield. Junior high basketball teams on a great season. The seventh grade fell short against Southwood. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one because I was just in, I just read that last time. So 312, thanks to Mr. Baker and Mr. Elsroff for organizing and sponsoring intramural volleyball this winter. They decided to try volleyball and it was a success. We had more staff involvement and the great thing is that students and staff raised $720 at the annual student versus staff final game. The students chose where to donate the money for the $2 admission to the game. And this year they chose fish. Intramurals are great, but it's awesome when kids can be involved in thinking of others and giving back to our local community. And I don't think Mr. Snyder put down in there because he didn't want to rub it in, I guess, but the staff did win that, that game. So also then we have a exemplary behavior report that I want to read. And this is from Southwood, the boys and girls, Southwood track and field teams received exemplary behavior recognition from Allen Wright for the highest Southwood versus Mississinawal track meet. Wright stated, "Tonight, I was a track starter for the Mississinawal versus Southwood coed track meet. Even though it was the first outdoor meet of the year, the student athletes from both schools were professional, prepared for each event, and showed great sportsmanship throughout the evening. Both schools were well coached and never once did I have to wait for athletes to be ready for the individual events. I believe the administration from each school should be proud of their choice, of their coaches and student athletes, along with their fans who were in attendance. As an official, it was a very enjoyable meet to officiate. For these reasons, I would like to nominate both Mississinawals and Southwoods coed varsity track teams for an exemplary award. I wish you both good luck and thank you for being a good example. Sincerely, Allen Wright, Indiana High School Track Official." And so that's all I believe I have this evening.
All right, we have some donations that we need to get some approvals of. Recommendation to approve an anonymous $100 donation for Southwood Elementary for students in need. Then we have an additional list here. This recommendation for $4,800 donation for the Southwood baseball. And these are how that total comes about, all these donations. Jennifer Meyer, Ruhoff, $250. Todd Adams, State Farm, $250. Peyton Alissa Dieter, $200. Dust Buddings Cleaning Service, $250. Nicholas Abbey Driscoll, $200. BGS Services, $250. Sutton Real Estate LLC, $400. Bing and Fally DDS Family Dentistry, $250. Cool Foods Incorporated, $250. Gentry Wellness Pump, $500. Complete Glass Solutions, $250. FJ Reddick and Sons, $200. Shepherd Chevrolet, $250. GM Reynolds Oil Company, $200. Terrell Reli Group LLC, $200. Ford Meterbox Company, $200. Moser's Tarp, $500. And True Land Equipment LLC, $200. No need to motion in a second to approve those donations.
I move to accept donations.
You have a motion in a second? You got it?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, you already did your last spot, right? We jumped.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, public comment, agenda items. Any comments? Tell the comment about what we've already talked about or...
Any agenda items.
Any agenda items. If you guys look at the agenda and you have anything?
Just the, I just, I'm trying to give a little more information about the building projects, what's planned and the alternatives are. Clearly, we don't have enough to go to referendum and do anything different. So I'm just looking for understanding, I guess, of what's going to happen and what the... When I say what the motivation is, I don't mean that to be sarcastic or smart. Like, I actually want to know what we're doing and why we're doing it and how much the charter could cost. You know, I know nobody wants to do that, but what would it cost to revamp and all that stuff? Sorry, I'll throw some more. Those are the kind of questions. And then, and again, I don't even have all the information, but someone, something was said about the possibility to build a field house on the Northfield campus. And I was trying to understand the rationale for that, I guess.
This is really a comment section, so I mean, I could go through all of that. If you want me to, I can go through and start from the beginning when we started last. Because part of it is when we get to that point, we're going to do the hearing of the lease agreement. And there will be a time in that, that I'll share all the different meetings that we had last year to get to this point.
That's my, if you're going to talk about later, that's my, that's my reason. Not that I want to see you guys, but that was the main reason.
Yeah.
So whatever you think is better.
Yeah. There's a lot of questions there and I can go through all of that. And we will share some of the information when we go through this hearing. We'll share all the different meetings that we've already had to get to the point where we're at now. And so really, this is just the final stage of, you know, working on this project. But we certainly can go over that and I can...
But I don't think I have to say it twice, so if you're going to cover it later.
Yeah, and I will.
Or if you're up for the lead.
And part of this is getting me out of here by telling me now. And part of this hearing is not necessarily going through all of that, but it kind of is too. So what we'll do is, I can share more later, but we discussed this and discussed it for a long, long time now. It's been over a year. And so, and everything actually is on, you know, all of our documents as far as Facebook Live and YouTube and things like that. And so, but anyway, let's just wait and we'll go and we'll answer some of those questions there.
And so, Dave, I know you went to some of the, when we were doing the referendum thing, some of that stuff is duplicated. You know, some of the same information you might hear, what we based our decisions off of, is all came off of what was being talked about way back then. And so, so basically, it's not, not anything that hasn't been thought about for a lot of years. So it's, but yeah, we'll talk about it more.
And I would say if your questions don't get answered, then maybe it's time to set up an appointment with Mr. Keith Faber or whatever to talk through that stuff.
The same way it's our stuff to talk about.
Yeah, we're good.
You know, always feel free to contact any of us, you know. We don't know everything. These guys know most of everything. All right, let's move on to our considered agenda items. Approval of our minutes in our regulars meeting there, February 27th. Get a motion to approve.
Second.
All those that are in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, financial reports, claims. Do I have any questions on the claims?
I need the claims. Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the claims, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Payroll. Anything additional?
No, I just, I think I said it last time, you'll see an increase in payroll as we get in those winter coaches stipends. You'll probably see the majority of those come within the next two quarters, probably.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Financial summary, Chris.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, obviously, this is the end of the month balance sheet, so you can see where our, any balances are for each of our funds. Nothing out of the ordinary or a surprise from any of that stuff. The second thing I wanted to mention, not related to this per se, but we had our audit exit meeting for, oh, were you going to talk about?
Go ahead.
Okay. Our audit exit meeting, Scott, Mike and I met with the auditors as they were finalizing the audit for the '21, '22, '22, '23 fiscal years. It was a pretty, pretty clean audit, so we were in pretty good shape there. So we were just finalizing a few things and just a few adjustments that we needed to make for future things that came from the audit. I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to elaborate on that.
The only thing I was going to say is, you know, with, with the large budget, with all the things that are going on, with all the different federal funds, you know, just to thank Chris and his team, business office, for all the things that they do to have a clean audit. This is the second time this independent group came in to do the audit. And it's just great to hear about all the work and how successful in that way. And so it was a clean audit.
Yeah, the state board accounts usually have done our audits in the past, but the last couple of times they've had to contract those out, which then we look with somebody that maybe is not as familiar with schools as the state board accounts is, and so just working through some of those things.
Well, we sure appreciate you guys being fiscal responsible with this budget and getting it towards that because when I heard from him, he was pleased with what that looked like. So, thank you. Personnel recommendations. Yes, we did pay a little bit.
Oh, yeah, we did. I'm doing, he's your bonus job, yeah.
He's the secretary.
He's, he's, he's good at everything.
I put ones and twos, I guess I'm ready for personnel.
What, what, are you trombone? Okay, I was trying to, I was like, what instrument was he playing back there? You're hiding. All right, HR. Got a few things here. Got a resignation of a couple of people. Carmella? Yeah, Carmella Turner, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. That was effective '26. And Haley Laney, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. That's into the school year. Employment, Danielle Stout, custodian at Southwood Elementary. Kami Ross, transferring from third grade teacher at Sharp Creek Elementary to the STEM teacher at Northfield High School effective August 5th, so beginning of next year. And we have one retirement, Cindy French at Cook, Southwood High School. That's effective March 15th. And we've got our summer school staff for the summer for all the K through eighth grade. Jeanette Moore, summer school teacher.
Well, that actually seems more like the director, and so I don't know.
Say director, summer school director. Alyssa Dieter is a third grade reading teacher. Jennifer Finney, third grade reading professional. Tara Hoppert, third grade reading teacher. And Caleb Blake or Black, third grade reading paraprofessional. Laura Schultz, MIA level one. Heather Quick, MIA level one. Jeanette Moore, MIA level one. Kayla Paul, MIA level two. Heather Quick, MIA level two. Jeanette Moore, MIA level two. And Hannah Rupert, MIA level three. Brett Evans, MIA level three. And Jeanette Moore, MIA level three. And Adam Phelps of High School.
And that's it.
And been mentored.
And just for our audience, in my, minds in action. Minds in action. If you're calling Mrs. Moore to come in and kind of share all the things that they're doing for this summer. Great events and experiences for our students in those three different levels.
All right, can I get a motion in a second to approve HR? So... Got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on to reports. Hartland Cruise Center, Matt, we have anything new? No progress, nothing happening?
I have that meeting. I have a meeting.
Next week, all right. Hopefully you'll get something going.
We'll see.
Superintendent reporter.
Well, as promised, I was going to share a little bit of legislation. I'll make it real quick for you because there are some things that we'll have to learn more. But before I do that, I just want to let you know that the robotic teams, they won't be going to the state until the following, it's not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. But we do have five elementary teams and three high school teams that are going. So we have eight teams going all together. So we want to congratulate them and wish them good luck when they go down to Lucas Oil Stadium. So, all right, tighten your belts here, here we go, real fast. Your seatbelt's out, it was not your financial belts, but... So just a few, HB 1104, school safety. There's going to be armed intruder drill protocol. We have all kinds of drills. You know, we have fire drills, we have tornado drills, we have earthquake drills, we have man-made drills. Now we have armed intruder drill protocol that will be happening. Property taxes, there's a legislation on that. Of course, these haven't been signed yet by the governor, so we're not going to go over too many of them. I have a lot of them here. At the end of this session, there were 16 House bills, 16 Senate bills that were actually more education-related. Not all of them passed, but a lot of them did. But I'm going to highlight the ones that will affect us more. We have House Bill 1243, various education matters, a lot of different things about, a lot of different things. It's about language as far as the 62%, the funding floor. They, they put all kinds of things in there. 2028, a new high school diploma. DOE will conduct the annual survey for fees. There's just all kinds of things on that one. This is one for in meetings, HB 1338, security of property and meeting decorum. All right, so you can actually give warnings and have people leave a meeting. That's in legislation, so...
Want to do that now?
Probably during July 1st.
Yeah.
You're good at throwing stuff out.
Get as wild and crazy as you want.
Yeah, fine, yeah. I didn't say anything, I looked and then somebody looked at that. But anyway, House Bill 1380, also various education matters, a lot of different things about minimize or eliminate the use of timeouts. That's not for basketball or football, that's other kinds of things. A lot of other things in that one too. House Bill 1, as you know, the lower the number, 1, is very much a priority. Probably means it's going to pass, which it did, and that has a lot to do with literacy. About, actually, the DOE is supposed to notify parents of the retention requirements under the plan. In other words, kindergarten, so the, I don't know how that's going to happen, but that's what they're supposed to do. Of course, now, instead of just having third grade be tested in iRead, it would also be second grade starting next year. Also, summer school for those that do not pass. And also retention exceptions and appeal, there is an appeal process. We knew that was probably going to pass, we just wanted to learn a little bit more how that's going to work. Senate bill also, 6, has reading proficiency that deals with, DOE again, will develop a method to identify students in grades 4 through 8 who did not pass state board of education-approved evaluations and guidance on how to support them. Interesting bills. And the other one is SB 150, AI and cybersecurity. There'll be a task force, technology resource policy, and a cybersecurity policy. Some of these things we already have in place, but not all of them. Senate Bill 185 deals with student use of wireless communication device, meaning their personal devices. And so wireless communication device policy. So we will have a policy that we will develop for that. And then also, we will then have to put that on our website so everybody knows about it. There's a Senate Bill 282, talks about absenteeism in school attendance. One thing, prosecuting attorneys shall identify each parent of a child when an affidavit is filed regarding the child's compulsory attendance violations or if a child is a habitual truant. And that's basically for kindergarten through sixth grade. So a lot of discussion was about getting that started early, so parents know that we need to make sure that we give our students to school. So there'll be a lot more to that, but I told you to be quick. And so those are some of the updates with what happened. Just remember though, this is a short session, so there wasn't going to be too much that was supposed to be controversial, but there was still a lot of controversial bills in legislation. And so we will wait for the governor to sign those and then go to work and get some other things taken care of. And I believe my notes, talk about the audit a little bit, we'll talk to you. So that's all I have, put it on.
All right, great. You have anything?
I'll just fill in on our testing schedule. We just finished our WIDA testing, which I haven't been around enough to ask Jeff to start quizzing you. When I come up with a test name, you have to say what it involves, and so...
Not tonight.
Not tonight, you get a, you get a night off. WIDA is our federal requirement to test all of our English learner students. And so we have a very small population of those students, but we have to test those. W-I-D-A. And we are also doing iRead testing this week. And today, both high schools, North and South, did their SAT testing for the juniors. White's has been doing theirs also. And so tis the season for testing.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right, we are up to new business. So all of this, we're all out. We have, our next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a hearing on the proposed lease agreement for the construction projects and additional appropriation hearings for the bond proceeds. If you're interested in speaking at the hearings, please make sure you have signed in the sheet, which should include your name and address. There will be an opportunity for public to make comments about these rental, the lease rental to be paid under the lease and additional appropriations and proceeds. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topics be limited to the lease rental and additional appropriations under consideration. The notices of this hearing on the lease and additional appropriations were published as legal required. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-47-3, before a school corporation may enter into a lease with a nonprofit building corporation, the school corporation must conduct, conduct a hearing regarding the execution of the proposed lease document and whether the rental to be paid to a building corporation under the proposed lease is a fair and reasonable rental for the proposed improvements. Similarly, before the school corporation can appropriate any dollars it directly receives as bond proceeds, it must conduct a hearing on those proceeds for the additional appropriation of those bonds. We will now hear, hear from the administration about these, about projects which have been described at prior meetings.
Here's Mike. Okay, I'll go ahead and start, and Dr. Kuhn can fill in anything that I missed. But I will, since there was a question about that, kind of go over a little bit of history. So in 2019, we developed a strategic plan. And one strategic plan, number four, was all about facilities, about being efficient as part of the technology. And as you know, in 2021, there was a, I'm sorry, 2022, there was a referendum to look at that, look at that strategic plan to be able to become more efficient in the school district. So that did not pass in 2022. So we had to pivot then and look at some situations, especially Sharp Creek Elementary was one of those that has been discussed for a long time, if we recall. At one time, and actually in 2016, it was actually going to be closed and we're going to do some other things, but that was changed. And so with all of the other things happening, then we went to look at what should we do as far as repair of the building. And so there were, we had a construction, some audits done, the audits came back and said we really had like three different options. Redo all of Sharp Creek, which it really all needed to be done. All of you guys know that, you took tours and things like that. Add on to Metro North Elementary or add on to Northfield. Those costs came in and the most efficient way of doing that was to add on to Northfield. And so we started having those meetings, and I will get those meeting dates for you. So we had work sessions, and again, work sessions are meetings that are held in public. We actually had those on Facebook Live, they're obviously still on our website. As far as looking on the YouTube channel, you can find those. And so we had one in January, January 17th of 2023. We also had one in April 10th, 2023, and we also had one in August 8th, 2023. Along those same lines then, after all those work sessions, we had a decision was made on August 22nd, 2023, a decision to go with one of those three options. And that option then, at that point, was chosen, and that was to add on to Northfield for grades 3 through 5, because eventually we would have the sixth grade move to Northfield in those classrooms that we had available. And then we had the bond hearing in September 12th of 2023. That was the first bond hearing that we had, of course, that was all advertised. And then the final bond hearing for this project was done on September 26th of 2023. And so that goes along. So then to answer the question here, we went through all of that. We had much discussion with our architect, we had discussion with some construction people, looking at different ideas and came up with this. And so we're basically to the point where to become more efficient, we know also that Sharp Creek, besides all of the, all of the work that needed to be done, we also know that utility costs are rather high for that small footprint, because we typically run the boiler system, even in the summertime, with the air conditioner system, just to make sure that we have the right humidity and different things like that in there. So we are to the point where we're doing this hearing, but we have already hired a construction manager. Our architect is working now with our staff to, to look at the classrooms, to look at basically that part of the building. So Sharp Creek Elementary will be demolished. And so there will be a gym that will be put in there, because we already lost a gym. Well, we don't have Sharp Creek, so there will be a gym put in that addition at Sharp Creek. Along with, not at Sharp Creek, I'm sorry, but at Northfield, along with classrooms, along with offices, along with the commons area where those students can eat, because obviously they had their own cafeteria too. And some of those details aren't ready yet, but they're, they're getting closer as far as working with the construction managers and also working with architects to design all of this. I don't know if there's any questions, but some of the things.
No, so, so the gist of it is, so this is what you get when you listen to people, they give you all the information. This sounds like a reasonable project compared to what I had heard from people. And some of them are on staff at Metro, so I'll, I'll stop at that rate. But so, K through 2 will stay, all will go to Metro.
Pre-K through second grade will stay at Metro North Elementary.
And pre-5 will be here, and then sixth grade will be like middle school and all, high school.
Just like we have at Southwood right now.
Yes.
Alright, so, okay, that's great. Um the funding, you said you're leasing like the building corporation, so you're in the um, like we would go lease a tractor or something. That's, is that what you're doing to? Is that part of the funding for the building project? Is that what you're saying, or I misunderstood?
Yeah, let me read this. Um this actually was asked of us, this was actually asked of us, and it part, it goes along with this, too, so um I'm just gonna read this to you, okay? It'll be better to read it. Uh the finances would come from the lease bond financing structure. The school corporation is funding this project for the lease financing as has done with others uh past construction renovation projects. Lease financings are used by school corporations across Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. This type of financing does not count against the school corporation's constitutional debt allowance. This might help a little bit, this next uh paragraph. The building corporation will purchase a portion of the Northfield Junior Senior High School campus at the closing for at least the appraisal value. The building corporation will then lease the real estate back to the school corporation. The lease rental due to the school corporation will pay for property taxes. The lease rental will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest due to the bond holders. And I don't know if anybody else wants to to give any more information, but basically, this is, this is something that we've um done many, many years, and actually, I had information about how many years, obviously, school districts have done that. We did a bond um and then a lease bond also in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I mean, this is twenty twenty-four now. Twenty twenty-three for all the renovations right now that you know about, too, the locker rooms, the tennis courts, the roof at Southwood Elementary, the chiller, and what did I forget?
Uh weight room.
And the wa- well, locker room, the weight room, all that together. So that, so that is the same kind of lease bond or lease that we're doing. We did that then. Uh obviously, it's been done many, many, many years prior to this.
All the back since nineteen seventy-eight, you know, this corporation.
So is it like, and I'm sorry to keep looking at Scott, but I know that he knows what I'm talking about, so I never else probably does do it. So at the end of the lease period, do, does MSD still, do they end up with like a balloon payment and buy the building back, or does this corporation own the building forever?
No.
How's that? I mean, I may be confused about what it actually is going on.
You wanna explain that? I, I don't know, but explain what you're actually asking about.
He's wanting to know.
It's just transferred back once the debt.
Free and clear, he's like, is it free and clear when we're done with the final payment?
So it's like, okay, so.
You'll have an additional payment at the end.
So the final, like the seed barn we have, but Scott's gonna come out. I know that he's itching to come out and talk to us about seed in our new barn. Yeah, but it's similar, right? We, so we pay a lease payment every year, and then at the end, the last payment is is called the buyout. It's actually just the last payment residual.
It's not a balloon, though. It's gonna be the same.
Right, it's the same. It's like the equal part or whatever, but then at that point, can you?
And and I'm not sure, I don't, I I understand completely the way we have to go about this. We do this on our farms also, but it's kind of protects you a little bit, too, but I don't know.
It's about how much we can borrow. There's a debt maximum in the Indiana Code that you can only borrow so much through a geo, what we call those general obligation bonds. And so anything that above that, this is the only avenue that school districts have to borrow beyond that.
So as far as funding, um the payment of the lease then will be through regular general fund, or there'll be additional property taxes assessed to increase what what the property tax have to come up to cover that?
Not now. This, this project is is tax neutral.
Okay.
Um we already had the taxes from, or from the twenty twenty-three um actually raised some of those, and so this project alone, though, is a tax neutral.
But they are all paid back through debt service, which is from local property tax.
Yes. But you're not anticipating a big, I mean, I'm not gonna have to pack my suitcase and come with this one.
It's not gonna be a different one you get in the spring, I think it's.
Yeah, this, right, because this one don't, wasn't, won't take effect until twenty twenty-five.
So what you see this spring will be the same. It won't, this will not increase, so it's not gonna have a huge impact on. Okay, yeah, I'll try to be.
Well, it did go up, but, and that's what we said during the referendum, um and we had to do some of these projects. I mean, things were needing to be done, so.
This is our next best analogy.
So everything is, right, I'll be quiet. So everything that's being done will be at the Northfield campus and then.
Not everything. We also, one other thing that we're doing is um we're adding a cafeteria space at Metro North.
Okay.
Part of this pro, part of this uh project.
I forget. That was, is that still in there?
Yeah, it's been in for a long time, so. And we have prepaid, yeah, and we have breakfast now, too, so um that's why we're doing that.
Well, you said what?
Yeah, so the, this, this funding does include that part.
This is a small portion of the fund, you know, that is part of that project.
Is this leading to one county school?
No, we're still having, we're still, we're still have south, we still have north. Uh basically, what it kind of does is we have two schools north, our south, I'm sorry, I'm putting wrong directions, and south. Um although we do have whites, but whites are not our building. Yeah, but that's part of ours, that's, yeah, and so now we will have two basically buildings. We'll have Metro North Elementary. And we still don't have a name yet. Right now, we're calling it the Northfield Elementary, but it will be connected to Northfield Junior Senior High School. So that doesn't change anything. Um we need to sp, we need to have these classrooms for the students that we have, so, you know, without um, yeah, so.
We're gonna have too many classrooms. The population's going down.
No, um actually, with our, with our preschool students that we have now, um we're pretty much full, full in in all of our classes. In fact, we really need more classrooms if we wanted to hire or have more pre-K. So uh right now, we have nine classrooms of pre-K students. And uh Metro North is pretty mu, yeah, it's full, Southwood Elementary's full. Now that we moved Southwood, the sixth grade, it's pretty much full. When I say full, that we're using, we're occupying all the, all the classrooms.
It's practical.
Right, and so.
The waiting list, there's already waiting list.
Waiting list for pre-K, too.
For more pre-K than we already have.
One of our thoughts was, too, we, one of those options was to add on to Metro North. And we kind of voted the the money-wise, the best goes down, and our phones tend to add on to Metro North. We're thinking the two schools, fourth and two schools, south, well.
Yeah, and you never know in the future. It's easier to close a small school. Put a bunch of money to, not that that's gonna happen. I tell them.
Right.
And we were talking, if you had, like, you were sitting north and south, well, you got your, not the side on the red, you wouldn't have to add on to because Southwood, you do have your south school and your north school. That's why we thought with the high school.
Still got the fountain, it's like it's still out. This is my last comment, then we can leave. Go ahead.
Comes from a fellow in town, and I, you've probably heard of him. I don't know if so or not. Want to start bringing the, some of the seniors from Southwood to Northfield?
That's new stuffs.
No, that's, no, that's not, that's not.
That's, that's, some of these stories get started, they're somewhere out in the woods, I guess.
Yeah, you get on Facebook, you talk to a lot of stories, so.
I don't do Facebook.
And that's, and that's why, you know, we do make these meetings public, you know, even all the pre-plan that we've had with this, because all of the. Disinformation can be, you know, taken away. And so now, so now, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, for our school district, you know, we will have the two campuses, north and south, and we are doing what will keep us looking towards the future for the next twenty-five or thirty years to to become a better district even in ourselves. And so um not saying that, you know, what we do, on the north side won't happen on the south side, you know, but we're just, we're trying to improve what we know is is lacking here. And it's, and it, it'll be good, and it's the, and like Christian said, it's the, it's the cheapest, cheaper route, so, and the most efficient route.
Maybe uh, uh don't do a lot of good to put an article in the newspaper, or a lot of people don't get it, but but maybe in the paper or wherever else you advertise, to clarify that there aren't gonna be two high schools like they have been, et cetera, et cetera, that you're talking about.
I think he did have an article in the newspaper.
Yeah, I actually was reading some of the things that I gave to David Nelson, who was the um editor and reporter for them, because he asked a lot of questions, too, about this, and so we we gave him all the information. I mean, there's other things I could have read, but if you were asking your questions.
In the paper.
That was in the plane deal, the plane deal.
That was just.
Did they actually approve, read it before they published it?
No, but the nice thing is, if they give us the questions ahead of time and we can do it, then it makes it a little bit better, too, because, no. And sometimes they, I won't say anything else.
You don't know if you had ever figured it out?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave you guys. I did have my other thought. I don't, this is off, I can't do this, it's offside. I just.
At the end, at the end? At the end, you could, because we're almost, actually, we just go through this. At the end, you can make comments on anything, actually.
Whatever, right, we can talk about later.
That's not it.
Thanks.
Answer the questions.
You have a careful.
Enjoy the nice warm weather out there.
For a little while.
I got sidetracked. We're here. Right?
Yeah.
Now we're ready for the resolutions.
Alright, well, so we got, we got to do our public hearing. We got a public comment.
Now you.
Right?
Close the hearing. Top of the page.
Yeah, but I didn't really open that, so I guess. Alright, thank you. I guess we didn't give Mr. Evans a chance, but.
I would just see an economy hire for him, like, hey, I'm good.
Hey, we got that. Okay, thank you for all those who participated in the hearing. We will now close the hearing.
You go to number three, that's gonna be fun, so.
Alright, Chris, could you summarize the resolution authorizing execution of the lease?
Sure, as required by Indiana Code twenty forty-seven three. After a lease hearing, the school board must approve the lease document and authorize the school board officers to execute such lease. This lease is the agreement whereby the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments throughout the life of the bond issued. The lease payments will be paid to the building corporation, used to pay the bondholders to repay the proposed bonds.
Can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution authorizing execution of the lease? So. Alright, you have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Chris, could you summarize the additional appropriation resolution?
The additional appropriation resolution outlines the appropriation of funds received for the sale of certain school facilities to the building corporation, upon which portions of the project will be constructed. The resolution also specifies that any such funds will be placed in a school corporation construction account separate from all other school corporation funds and spent only on the projects since they are bond proceeds.
Alright, could I have a motion in a second to adopt the additional appropriation resolution? A motion in a second, all those.
Who was that again? I'm sorry.
Christian second.
Christian second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Chris, could you please summarize the resolution assigning bid contracts?
The next resolution is the resolution assigned bid contracts to this building corporation. At the bond closing, the building corporation will own facilities where the construction and renovation work will be completed. The building corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. The bond proceeds will be held by a trustee bank and will be used to pay the contractors for the renovation work. As a result, certain contracts may need to be with the building corporation, because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The school corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, but then authorizes the ability to assign those bids and contracts to the building corporation for payment at the discretion of the board.
Alright, could I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution assigning con, construction bids to the building corporation?
Sure.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Chris?
Couple more.
He's got a few more. Could you please summarize the resolution authorizing the supplement to master continuing disclosure, undertaking, and issuance of bonds?
This resolution satisfies the Securities and Exchange Commission requirement that a school corporation enter into a continuing disclosure undertaking agreement if it issues bonds to public investors. The agreement requires that the school corporation agree to timely provide certain financial information and provide notice of certain material events if and when they occur.
Alright, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution approving the fourth supplement to master continuing issuance of bonds? So. A motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Chris, could you please summarize the resolution authorizing issuance of bond anticipation notes?
Yes, with certain construction projects, there may be upfront design and construction costs of significant enough size such that a temporary notes are necessary in order to fund those costs. This resolution authorizes the issuance of bond anticipation notes in order to pay those costs until the long-term bonds are issued. The bonds are the sole source of repayment for these bond anticipation notes. And so we do this just in case we were to run into cash flow issues, because we are spending our own funds upfront early before those bond bond monies are actually received, and then we can pay ourselves back with those bond monies. And so this would just be, I don't anticipate us have to do it, but this is just in case.
Is there any anticipation of how long it takes to get the money after you?
So for these anticipation notes, we've done them before, like the tax anticipated warrants back, it's been several years now, but usually we get those monies pretty quickly, and then we just repay those back in the end of the year.
But I think you might be asking, too, about uh when the bond money will be coming available.
Well, we're not looking to do.
Until this fall.
Until this fall, and so once that gets started, it's pretty quick. I think it's like a week.
More than that.
Alright, so it's just whatever happens pre, pre that, that time. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution approving bond anticipation notes? Maybe a second? You were first. Christian. Yes, thank you. Alright, I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, make sure I wasn't missing any other resolutions. Alright, any unfinished business? Uh board policy? Any public comment, Mr. Evans? Congratulations on the MIA. That will be fun. I'm jealous. Are you, you're level three? Are you level three?
I am.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, you are good.
Everybody loves to Kansas, so it'll be interesting.
Good, that's awesome. Well, we appreciate you being willing to do that for the kids.
Yeah.
Now, any items for the board members? Alright, if nothing, we'll adjourn.